To our 400 Year Insight and Beyond Forum. Anybody who knows that, or if you don't know, 1619 to 2019 was 400 years from when the first slave ship landed in the United States. And that's why we're all here, just in case you didn't know, but I know you all know why you are here. That's why you're here, because you've come to get educated and to learn insight on the 400 years. So I'm so happy to see everyone and I do, do, do thank all our, I would say, on-time folks. Because we did promote 5 o'clock and I can truly say we had 5 o'clock folks in the house. But we rushed later to begin at 6:00, so we're still pretty much on time. So I want you all to give yourself a thundering round of applause. We want thunder, a thunderous applause. Because I am so happy to see you all, truly and truly, because our history is very important for everyone to know, especially our youth. So that they will know and realize that our history did not begin with slavery. That we are kings and queens and princes and princesses. So without further ado, again, it gives me great pleasure to welcome you. And you know my name is Cheryl D.B. Murphy, just in case you don't know me. I am the founder, president, and CEO of Jersey City Caribbean Carnival. So without further ado, everybody has a program. This is going to be our program for the evening. And I would like to introduce Ambassador Dr. Freud to come up at this time.
Well, I'm here to perform a singular task, but I'm saying very difficult task. Because the person that they want me to introduce is somebody that is already well-known, better than Okong'o and beyond. For, for the few here who don't know who the person is, I'm going to let the person do his own introduction for himself. And I'm going to call him here to come here, because if I do that, I'm going to do just... He's somebody who have worked very hard in this community in many, many different capacity. Throughout New Jersey, New York, and sometimes it's on, they can finish one program here, you'll see him flying to other states to do community work. My good friend, His Excellency, Royal Majesty Reverend Dr. Prince A.K. Adéquia II. I'm ready, if you may see that. Thank you for the honor that has you do so, and the good Lord honor you. Thank you, everyone. First and foremost, my sincere apology for the late start. It's better late than ever. But we are trying to change, in the retreats, we're trying to change the way Africans do things. And we're supposed to start today, but we have 15 minutes left. Please give us every round of applause. And we're all here for this, thank you, thank you, everyone. Very good, Lord bless you. And first and foremost, I would say, before I introduce myself, I would say, thank you so much for having us, Councilwoman Waterman. Please give her a round of applause. So much, we appreciate you. My excellent partner, the chief host of this event, Ambassador Cheryl Murphy for Jersey City and the Pacific Carnival. Thank you, you are such wonderful, we appreciate you, so. Thank you. And to my good friend, who's fighting a good fight and good cause for the entire continent of Africa and beyond. Thank you so much for that introduction. Please give it up for Ambassador Freud, please. You're very well appreciated. I just choose to acknowledge those few people at this time. There are a lot of people to be acknowledged among us, as a matter of fact, we are all here, each of us special. Because if we're not special, and if the situation of Africa, continental Africa, and diasporic Africa, and the, the way we live in this world today, if it's not as concerning to everyone of us, we would not be here. So I'm sure we're here for a reason, and thank you so much for being here this evening, if you let me know if something else, give yourself a round of applause. Thank you. So, there are a few things that Ambassador Freud need not mention about me. And then the fact that he said he didn't want to, you know, I don't know how he coined it, but I will introduce myself properly, just for the record. Tonight, I stand before you as where I am, almost everything to the community, and tonight, in the role of your MC and moderator. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So now, let's get the program started. So at this time, may I please applaud the judges of Ms. Gloria Valdez-Martín Adíos in a very short opening prayer.
What special father, we give you glory, we give you honor and adoration. We thank you for such a wonderful day, and we thank you for such a wonderful event. We thank you for how far you have brought us, though there were giants on our way, but we were not afraid and we have come thus far. As we're heading towards rebuilding Africa, or just like the book of Nehemiah, you will continue to guide us as Nehemiah builds Israel. You will lead us to the right place, to the right people at the right time. Of our brothers and sisters that are here, God, we thank you for what you have done in their lives, and the heroes that laid the foundation for them to be free again. God, you know that we were oppressed and suppressed, but help us to move beyond our odds and be able to rebuild ourselves. All this I pray through Jesus Christ, our Lord.
A round of applause, please. Ambassador Freud, no, I'm sorry. I'll add you, Abba Kamara.
I'm just going to do a general prayer for blessings, guidance, love, pressure. And also pray for whatever goal the organization intends to reach.
I worship God, I worship the Lord. In the name of God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. The love of God, the love of the Lord. The Lord is our God, and the Lord is our strength. He is our savior, our strength. The savior that we worship, the one who has given us power. The one who has given us glory, and has given us power. Amen.
I ask permission from the elders, our elders, and I simply begin, thank you. It's our tradition that we, before we begin any of our programs, we ask permission from the elders, as we know, by their blessing, that we engage in ceremonies that we begin. And so, our elders, Dr. Jeffries and Dr. Jeffries, Dr. Louie Jefferson, Dr. Ross Jeffries are resident elders, and so I think I'm giving permission to begin. So here today, we've got our four libations, for those of you who don't know what libation is, it's time to pay tribute to those who came before us, who made it possible for us to be here today. And so as we do so, we want to do so in many different ways that people do libations. Some may use alcohol, or water, or even colonine. And so, I use water, water is this cycle of life, and so that we are, the essence of us as our being is over 70% water. The most solid world which we live, the earth itself is mostly water. And the air that we breathe is densely packed with water, we just don't know, and we breathe in the water, the moisture in the air. And so therefore, this water is the thing that relieves us, and that it travels through the millennia. And so that we pay tribute for those, we know really that, recognize that it's really with one time. And that time that we pay tribute to is that we talk about the those who come from the past. And libation is a participatory thing, so I need you to participate with me. So then we say "ashay" when we go through the process, so if I ask you to say "ashay", so then we pour libation, so we want to pay tribute for those who came from the past, "ashay", the present, "ashay", and those yet to come. And so that we know that we say all three, because we know that all three are present at one time. That a piece of you, your DNA, your physical and your spiritual being was at the beginnings of the beginnings of time. As well as those folks who were there at the beginnings of time, their DNA rests within you, and so that they are here with you. And that they will be with your children's children, and their great-great-grandchildren's children. So that they're really here in that sense, one time. We know that we come from all four directions, from the north, "ashay", south, east, and the west. I need everybody to help us out here. That we come from that which is above, and that which is on this plane, and that which is below. Once again, all but one. We understand that unification, that unity, that strengthens us. Since we're going to go slow a little later, I'm going to go through the process a little quickly, but we recognize that we've come from great people here. We're talking about reflecting upon this 400-year period. So we want to pay tribute for those who work hard to get us to this point and fought to make transformation. So first and foremost, for those who fought at the very beginnings of the beginning, when their first person was tried and taken from Africa, that they themselves, that's when the slave rebellions fought, "ashay". For those who dreamed the middle passage, who fought in the process of getting on those ships, we say "ashay", those in the hell holes that some people call palaces, really they were dungeons for us, "ashay", those who fought, like, we look around here, Mama, we have the Natty of the Jamaican, the Moors of Jamaica, we say "ashay", we have Ingaana, we have Gallasantwa, who, "When the men didn't stand up", she said, "If you don't stand up, we will, the women will stand up", she stood up, "ashay". The same statement was made by Amy Darby, when she said that the men were shaking in their boots, and if they don't shake, if they continue to shake, that we, the women, will push them forward, and we will be the ones to carry the struggle forward, "ashay". So these great women are the ones who help us to stay strong, and to fight and resist that, and find and help build families, and many of them built families. So we want to step to the side so you can look up here, and we see their names, because some of us may be looking here, but we don't recognize that these are the folks that are up here for a reason. Kwame Nkrumah, "ashay", Tusembi Obiture, and Hakeem, "ashay", Bernie from Jamaica, "ashay", Thomas Semcara, "ashay", Haley Salassi, Namna Ezekiel, we already mentioned Nam, Ayea Morris, Mark Wukakindu, Senka Pa, Oban Nala, the poor Rosalinas, this is Oban Ferri, "ashay", we have Rosa Parks, Harry Truman, Nelson Mandela, Darby, Albrecht, Charlie Chisholm, and many, many more. As we think about them, we also are here because of those in our own families. So I want you now to call the names of those in your families, make sure that they're here with us to help transform this space. So that they too know that we recognize their sacrifices. They too know that we appreciate, and that we know that we're here because of them.
Katie Benjamin.
"Ashay", that's the Allen. "Ashay, ashay",
Vanessa Jackson.
"Ashay", that's the phrase, "ashay", "toker for she, ashay",
Christmases.
I don't hear nobody come from the back row, let's hear their names, I want to make sure they hear their names aloud clear. "Ashay", "ashay",
Allen.
"Ashay", and any other names you can think of that are those ancestors who made it possible for us to be here today. Anybody who's specific to New Jersey, like, a great spokesperson and poet, Laurie, none other than Abbie Branca, "ashay", yes. "Ashay", everyone who have been to New, "ashay", yes.
Thank you, thank you so much for this. So at this junction, with honor being given to the mayor of the Gray City, who now hold on, the Honorable, a woman of substance, that stood with us in times of trouble, and still willing to opportunity to stand by us. Many are called, but few are chosen. We are honored, we are glad and blessed to have at this today, the person, in the Honorable, Councilwoman Joyce Waterman. A round of applause.
It's an honor to stand before you in a time like this. You know, I'm quite sure you heard the tragedy that went on in Jersey City. It really shook the city, so I just want to give our apologies while we're all not here as a councilwoman here, because we really want to add. And I won't be mistaken, because you know I have a virtual that I have to be at also. But I'm going to take this opportunity to thank Cheryl Murphy. Because, you know, when you're in this position, you have to have someone who will remind the people what's important. And culture is important, it really is. And Cheryl has been a trailblazer, a fighter, ever since I took office, to make sure that her culture is represented in City Hall. And so let's just give Cheryl a round of applause. You know, when the brother was talking about our shade and our ancestors and all, and I really appreciate that, because the truth is though, I stand on the shoulders of someone who sacrificed their life, because at one time or another, people of color was not in this office. And I don't forget that, alright? And as a people, I'm learning more and more, if we don't stick together, there'll be so much stuff that we cannot get done. So in times like this, it makes you say, put aside your differences, and let's make sure our voice is heard as a people, because time is short. And the, and the pathway that we make, really, is for the next generation. That's why I enjoy that, because you was acknowledging our ancestors that went on before us. And if there were any young kids here, they would have learned something tonight, how important it is for us to recognize where we come from. We all, you know, it's 400 years that we celebrate for the first one, you know, the first slaves that came over here. And when we came over here, we got scattered. We got scattered as a people. And now, because we recognize that they made us scattered, but we have an understanding that we really are one. Our men came from South Carolina, you may came from Jamaica, you understand? Someone may came from New Jersey, but when it's all said and done, we have one ancestors that came from Africa. And that's so important for us to realize that. Because if we don't start fighting as one for what we believe that is ours, that what we believe that we should have, we will not receive anything. And so I commend you for coming out, and I, and I just like the portion where you recognize the elders. Because when you were born down south, you know, and your parents come from down south, they teach you to recognize the elders, to give them the respect, alright? Because we stand on their shoulders, there's certain things that they had to endure, that we didn't have to endure. Just like there's certain things that I endured, that my children will have to endure, because we done paved the way. And because we have paved the way as a people, we have to look back and pull the next one up, because it's supposed to grow. Tonight, your forum is on insight into 400 years and beyond. So it lets us to know that life will go beyond, and for that, I am truly grateful. So on behalf of the mayor and the city council, you are always welcome in this chambers. This, you have a right to be. You have a right to be here. And so I'm just honored to be here to just give a few words, and on behalf of, like I said, the mayor and the city council, but most of all, on behalf that I'm a black woman. I know James Brown wrote that song, "Say it loud, I'm black and I'm proud", I was very young, but at that time, it was riots going on, praise God. But it was that song that meant so much to me when I heard it, because there were certain places that I could not go in. There were certain places that they would not hire me in, but every time I heard that song, "Say it loud, I'm black and I'm proud", that made me feel like I was somebody. So I am grateful, or I did not make a mistake when he made me black. There's no mistake in the color of our skin, we just have to learn how to embrace it, hold our head up high, and walk like we got, we came from kings and queens. God bless you.
Because they are honorable, Councilwoman, we're living for. We quickly, I believe, do the presentation now, before we get into the real deal. Are we good? You say a round of applause. Alright, like I told you before, I'm just taking order. This is a citation from the office of the Council of the City of New Jersey. And this citation is given to one of our panelists. This will be the first one that I will read in detail, and other ones, we just follow and hand out, because it's pretty much the same thing. This particular citation is directed to our doctor, Yehudweh Udupezo Omide. She's one of our panelists, and this is for participation in the Insight into 400 Years and Beyond, and the citation reads, "Whereas, on Thursday, December 12th, 2019, Councilwoman and Large Joyce Waterman, the Jersey City Caribbean Carnival Association, and Africa400years.org, we brought the forum to Jersey City City Hall Council Chamber to mark the 400th anniversary of arrival of the first African slave to be sold into slavery in North America. And whereas, Doctor Yehudweh Udupezo Omide is a Visiting Assistant Professor of Global Affairs and Politics in the History Department at Farmingdale State College, Doctor Udupezo Omide's expertise, research, and interest in global affairs, good governance, human rights, and gender equality will contribute greatly to today's forum. Now may it hereby cited by the Council President and Member of the City Council that Doctor Yehudweh Udupezo Omide is hereby recognized and thanked for her participation in the Insight into 400 and Beyond, signed by Joyce Waterman, Councilwoman and Large, City of New Jersey." Please a round of applause for that. Thank you, Councilwoman, and I will give this back to you, and you give it back to me, as I receive on behalf of Doctor Yehudweh. Okay. Alright. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. And the next person will be Doctor Ahul Ahul, Doctor Leon Jeffries, one of the panelists, please. And the next will be Professor, Doctor Akil Kafan, please come forward. The next will be Doctor Rosalind Jeffries, please. The next one will be our professor, Doctor Nelson Alu, please. The next one will be for the Honorable Paula Gordon, please, step forward. And the next one, like I said, leave it on my back, out of my heart, all I can say is Ambassador Cheryl D.B. Murphy.
It gives me great, great, great pleasure to give this next salutation to the Reverend Dr. Prince Adéquia II, but I would have called him the King. So the King Prince of 400 years, let's give him a third round of applause. He is the founder of the 400year.org.
This is a proclamation from the mayor's office, Insight into the 400 Years and Beyond Forum, Jersey City West Indian Caribbean American Carnival Association. Whereas the City of Jersey is proud to recognize African400years.org during the Insight into 400 Years and Beyond Forum on Thursday, December 12th, 2019. And whereas, the migration of Africans and forms of slavery started from 1619 through 2019, marked exactly 400 years of slavery this year. And whereas, founded on July 17, 2018, African400years.org movement was created with the support of descendants of Africa from all walks of life, from across the globe, in commemoration of 400 years of slavery journey, and to give back and build Africa. The African 400 Years Organization was formed to provide sensible solutions to development of Africa. Africa and the entire black race in commemoration of 400 years of African-Americans residing in the United States. And whereas, during the Insight into 400 Years and Beyond Forum, the City of Jersey City is proud to recognize the following individuals. That I, Stephen N. Fulham, Mayor of the City of Jersey City, hereby recognize African 400 Years Organization during the Insight into 400 Years and Beyond Forum on Thursday, December 12th, 2019. Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, without wasting much time, we would like to acknowledge the presence of our Honor, the Honorable Councilwoman Waterman, for our support and contribution in Insight into Africa 400. She's been there before now, this is not our first time of being a partner of Africa 400 Jersey City Carnival, and a strong believer in our access to her, she confessed to us tonight. If you have the privilege of seeing our last event at the Robert Tree Hotel, you see her heart be dead. So she's been with us in soul and spirit with all our effort, and that's why we're here today. Please give I a round of applause. We present, we present these to her, a drink from African400years.org. As a coalition member, African400years.org congratulates you, Honorable Councilwoman Joyce Waterman, Councilwoman and Large, for the City of Jersey City, New Jersey, for the successful outcome of co-hosting the 1619-2019 400 for the successful outcome of co-hosting the 1619-2019 400 Years Commemorative Gala Award Dinner, remembering the 400th anniversary of the beginning of American slavery. Tonight, the Insight Into 400 Years and Beyond, on behalf of the organization and all the coalition members, we present our honorable this. A commanding recommendation from the Newark Municipal Council. This is a resolution that is issued to our loved brother. Once again, please help me welcome Dr. Nelson Alou. On behalf of the council and the council president, Madame Mildred Crumb, I present this unto him. And on behalf of African 400, we present this unto him. It's also a phenomenon of women that's doing a great work among us. We have a lot of unsung heroes. They're quiet where they move the mountain. But sometimes, when you look around, their action speaks louder than voice, because they are who they are, and people like them make the world better. Please, give a round of applause to a woman legend and the founder of Lending Fund USA, Honorable Paula Gordon, from Newark Municipal Council. On behalf of Madame Crumb, Newark Municipal Council President, I present this to her. Once again, all I can say, Ambassador Cheryl T.B. Murphy. Newark Municipal Council President, Madame Crumb, I present this unto the ambassador. And also, to the ambassador, on behalf of Jersey City Carnival.
To my carnival family, we got a trophy.
Moses in Africa, in the Middle East, across the globe. He's there in, he's there in, whether it's Washington, whether it's New York City, United Nations, shouting, screaming, kicking, trying to get his voice heard. And he's been moving, and he's been doing phenomenal things. And I want to congratulate him, once again, for just concluding an event in New York City, I believe, a couple of days ago, two days ago. And he's somebody that I really respect and have much love for, because he stands for me and he, and he worked with me and him for a better Africa and a better Africans, all right?